Hi everyone, welcome back to day two of our GAD requirements with me series. Yesterday we worked on the name correction digitalization project and captured requirement through a stakeholder interview. Today we will move on one step further, we are simulating a J A D session, which stands for joint application design. So a J A D session is a collaborative meeting where business users, developers and sometimes testers work together to finalize requirements. It's a faster and more interactive than one-on-one interviews and it helps the entire team agree on what exactly need we build. So our project is today called the customer tax online delivery projects. Right now the backend sends customer statements manually every year. And these are, these are customer statement, uh, tax statements. So either by mail or attaching a PDF and sending it via email. So that process is slow and expensive and prone to errors. So our goal is to make this tax statement available online in the customer portal. So customers can login, download at their many time. So I'm even set preference whether they want to continue receiving them manually or digitally or both. So currently customers don't have any option to choose. Uh, some still paper-based copies and but many wants to secure digital option. So we'll use the same tool as before Confluence to capture our requirements. If you haven't already go, uh, go to, um, Confluence, just type in the Google Confluence and just click on this link. Uh, my by default, my email is registered. So if you are not a user, just use your Gmail or whatever preferred email you use. So you can using your email, you can sign into your account. Once you, you are logging or create a blank page and name it, okay? So I'm going to work on, so if someone don't have Confluence access, can use any kind of documentation, basically you can use a Notepad, notepad or word or Excel. And if you have access to Miro, Miro board or Figma, whatever tools you prefer, as long as you can type somewhere clearly, it should be good. So we will be using word and Confluence here, okay? So I'll click go ahead, click the Confluence page. So I just skip this one, skip, get started. Okay, so let me set up my page. So if you're coming from Jira, so if you login to Jira, so you can see something other apps or something here. So just switch back to Confluence, you can click from there as well. So let me go ahead and create a space for this one. That's another space, already I'm working on a space, okay? So I'm going to create a page, okay? So it's asking the page title. Uh, so we can name it customer tax online delivery, okay? So requirement gathering oh yeah, I'll write, okay, right. Gathering just for presentation, I'll write this on. You can name it, anything, whatever you want, okay? The decision, uh, let's publish it. Okay. I'm going to share, okay? So we can start entering details here, okay? Uh, so I'll type this basic thing, uh, my placeholders. These are the answers I am looking for. So I'll go ahead and type this one, okay? Any project, I need this information, so this is a really useful information. To be state J A D session notes, early requirements. Okay, so these are the placeholders, I'll update. Again, I'll go edit, so I can keep on working. So project, um, is customer tax online delivery. Um, let's write one main goal, uh, one line, right? So always try to write one sentence or one line and you can add more detail if you need, okay? So if you're planning to write one line, so like this, make customer tax statements available online and allow customers to, customer to set delivery, delivery preference. You have seen this options like when you login to a bank account. Bank will ask you, uh, O C R, you have seen this option, right? The delivery communication digitally, something like that, okay? So we can write more detail like if you know. So you don't need to write everything during your session. So your main goal is, I'm just, since we have time, your main goal is to uh, capture the notes, what stakeholder discussing, okay? So digitize how he send text statements instead of sending them manually by mail or email. The bank wants customers to be able to log into their accounts with and download their statements anytime, okay? Okay, if you want, you can correct this one, I'll keep this, okay? Okay, so this is the high level overview. Now let's tap to the current and manual process, what's happening today and what happens today or any without automation, okay? So I'm going to use like I, I'm going to use my word document, okay? And because once we have summary and we can come back to here, okay? So these are row notes, um, so don't get confused like um, because after a meeting, need to share right away, but I prefer I take my own notes and then I'll summarize in the conference. So go ahead and take my word document to capture my current process, okay? Because I can correct everything and I have this document. So what's happening today, bank generates. First, we need to listen and then we need to document, okay? Customer tax, don't worry, grammar mistakes and spelling mistakes, just get the idea right. Uh, you don't need to get the word by word, so listen carefully. Uh, that's your business analyst key skin, get the idea, uh, main functionalities and dependencies, what were you here? Type it, so we can refine later. Um, physical, physical copies by me, okay? Okay, this is what happening, so there is no centralized digital, um, access point for customers. Customers and customer customer preferences, our main idea is listen, um, what's been discussed during the meeting, okay? So that's our main idea, not to correct sentence and word, as long as you understood the uh, main idea, you can draft it the way you want, okay? So delays happen during session, so these are good points. Always having good background, so this is the world we are starting from. Everything manual and disconnected and repetitive, okay? So this is the current process. So now let's tap to the future version, what's the business want to, um, once after this project, okay? So write future future state, okay? Get to be, okay, we have separate section, um, in our here, current and future state, okay? But we are just taking notes and we can transfer this one after we correct it everything, okay? When you can write process mapping, but it's kind of there during a session, we cannot decorate or we can modify the document, but important is get the main idea. So that's why I'm using my working document. So we are use a spreadsheet, that's more easy, but for the typing, um, word is better. So if you have co-pilot or any other AI assistance, uh, you can use those. So make life very easy, um, make grammar and spelling another correction. So because here we are here to capture the requirement. Manual, uh, manual paper base, paper online, digital digital board, manual online system automatically stores customer preferences. Brief, brief, and says, okay? As I said, okay, no need to worry about the, um, typo error and other stuffs. Um, make sure you get the right idea, okay? Uh, email because we are going to, uh, send, send when new tax statements are because you'll get AI assistant like, uh, if you're going to use word, uh, you get co-pilot assistance. So don't spend time on modification on your document. So just keep on typing until you get your main idea. And sometime you get recordings and even AI generated notes also. But main focus is as a BA, you should understand what is the requirement. So I recommend you don't rely on the AI tools, still you can rely on the AI tools, but you see like I have many mistakes here. It's readable, right? Like, um, what's the current process, what's the future state, it's readable and I'm not, uh, missing anything here, right? So other than grammatical error and typo errors, right? So don't rely on AI assistant, so just draft your, your version and read it. See where you need, uh, then you can use it accordingly, okay? So now I'm going to, um, run everything with AI assistant with grammar and typo error. So let's quickly do that one and we can, uh, okay, so this is for the preferences. We can okay, let's correct this delivery. Okay, should be good as long as it's not red. Um, now we can copy this one. I'm going to copy and we can transfer to current state, I transfer to current state. And I transfer to the future state, this one. So it's the to be state. So we'll discuss once we reach here and just try to give a idea, okay? Um, so now stakeholders, so stakeholders are, um, like the people who going to participate in this project, right? Who is involved, uh, this one? So in a J A D session, these stakeholders are come together in one virtual room to discuss challenge and refine the requirements. So as the BA, my job is to guide and discuss, make sure everyone is input is captured and group up, uh, group agrees what we bid, okay? So I don't have any slide to show you, so let me write it down. So you understand what is the main purpose of J A D session, okay? So the main purpose, uh, so in a J A D session, this, uh, this mean we're going to list the stakeholders, okay? Let's write down the stakeholders, we can copy there, um, okay, stakeholders, um, put some bullets here, customer, our end user, right? End user, here's the customer, uh, operations team. Don't worry about the project, okay? So we are just, um, focusing, you can use to generate statements. So you just need to learn the technique, okay? That's it, IT department or team. So we can tell who is going to, uh, build this one or change. Who is going to work technically, your team, right? So where you all belongs, that's your IT department. Uh, so compliance, AML, all in all projects. If you are not directly dealing with compliance, hmm, who are the project owners, um, they will get approval. So just for your visibility, if you're a newbie, first time you are doing, you are not sure. So I will mention everything, okay? Who are involved, you may not need directly deal with these people. But the project owners have to get approval from, uh, this queries. E R S, okay? And that's it. Complaints, so these are the stakeholders. So main purpose in this session, uh, these, everyone is in a row, right? This stakeholder let's come together in one virtual, virtual or in person, or it doesn't matter, one room, okay? Uh, in one room, I'll tell, okay, one room, discuss challenge. Challenge and refine requirements. Different requirements, um, as the BA, um, your job is to guide the discussion, okay? So this is the main job, make sure everyone's input is captured and the group agrees on what will be built. This is the main purpose, okay? So let me bring this one or so that you can see. So this is what need to make sure to main purpose of this J A D session, okay? So all right, uh, let's imagine we are in a J A D meeting. Uh, different people are sharing their perspectives, I'll take live notes as if I am capturing the session, okay? So before that, I'm going to transfer this guys here in my conference, okay? Okay, I captured this one. Okay, so now we are going to work on J A D notes, okay? Sit there guys, okay? Let's head on, I'll put note section. So one by one, they are speaking, present team. Okay, so let's capture what operation is dealing, okay? Currently, lot of typing guys, sorry. Um, currently generate tax statements in kind of repeating, but we have to simulate, right? Form backend systems. Okay, uh, send thousands in means manually wants wants automation to reduce workload. So these are discussed by the operations team, its ability to track delivery status. So their request, okay, we are done, we captured their request. Uh, it's more to the other team, or this other team, your team, uh, IT development team, okay? Your team. So what's the question of clarity asked by your team, right? Your team, so just we are simulating, don't worry, okay? Uh, just watch to the end, so you'll get an idea. Uh, needs clarity, so they said these are the requirement, clarity, not clarify, clarity on integration points. Let's see what you need clarification, customer portal and backend statement system. This is our note, prefer prefers to use existing document, manage, management API. So once you heard from business and your developers, so these are architects and tech leads, they start talking, okay? Uh, they throw ideas, so you are not finalizing solution, you just start typing, that's it. You can ask question if you need clarification, but don't worry. Um, these are refined again and again, main idea to capture what they're talking. Requirements, okay? Detailed data format and files as requirement, so they will call your name, hey Jay, hey, uh, your name. Uh, can you make a note, uh, to get this one? Yeah, you have to say yes. Okay, if you don't understand, you will understand definitely, but make sure you take notes, okay? All right, um, so now let's move on to other team, what they have to say, let's listen. What other team, uh, we have, we talk to customer, okay? Guess customer representative, do they have anything, okay? Wants to, wants option to download any kind? Not just during tax session. Require, request to notification when a new statement is available. Looks like they have valid points because they know customer pain point. Because they talk to customer every day, right? So it's well, well, even other stakeholders not aware, so it's very valid input. Manual online or both. Okay, so we recorded what they need, uh, let's correct it, everything. Okay, it's done. Um, kind of we have a high level requirement, right? Operation team is telling the, this other thing required, uh, and IT department, like your team got an idea, they have and uh IT department like your team got an idea they have kind of idea what do they need to capture our team and we are listening to the customer representative also they have their input too and let's listen uh what's compliance team want to tell us okay let's see compliance officer what compliance officer want to tell us okay uh must ensure that only authenticated customers can use their need their own tax documents it's a valid point right everyone can see the uh requires statement data encryption in storage and this is a valid point we're going to use API so this will be taken care request audit logs of access okay for them this valid point for them so this is easy we can take care of this okay so we captured compliance officer point of view um again uh did we add call center we had call center customer service representative okay so it's kind of the same people uh I don't know okay uh again uh call center the people who deal with customer over the phone and customer service representative who uh deal with customer directly okay in a branch so this people it's kind of same thing uh these people are over the phone so I think I didn't add this one as my stakeholder for some reason presenting call center agent answer customer query okay let's add these people you don't know it's good to get everyone's opinion so that we can build a right solution wants to wants visibility everyone will talk the same point but different angle so it's good to get more feedback preference brief to typing queries quickly uh suggest an alerts stone and customer preference change okay so you have big job to do because the more business stakeholders talk and uh you need to get clarified because those are going to be become your requirements okay alright so during the JAD um your focus should be to listen and type exactly what's being discussed right don't analyze yet just capture everyone needs and concerns um summarize uh like after the JAD like I like to summarize what we heard to make sure the group agrees and may not right so I'm going to use uh do I have a did we have key pain points we discussed okay so I'll write here so I'm just so that everyone agree okay so because there are so many things discussed for a new person and it's hard to digest so tomorrow write and show to them they will say yes no so we don't like some sense okay everyone should agree statement so you see how many time I have written this one this is exactly you have to do so writing documenting clearly is the key skill for you so I operational so now you are summarizing what during during tax session lot of typing no online access access for tracking no customer pre preferences management risk of data privacy issues via email okay so key pay points that's why they have decide to uh digitalize okay opportunities uh opportunities it doesn't matter what title is you you don't need to use the exact title I'm using so but if you're a beginner and you don't know what to write and how to start this template you can use okay it's okay this template is good I'm using it's working for me so you're free free to use can use any method the main idea is kept the requirement clearly we can build to build the right product okay so no need to worry which method whose method um going to work ultimate goal is build the rights of the traffic and printing cost okay and this help everyone stay aligned so here just go through key points manual statement delivery um it's happening email or post today higher personal workload during tax session and no online access for tracking you see like uh first we discussed here and then we discuss in conference now you are summarizing with like few lines right no customer preference management risk of data privacy and issues via email and opportunity create online self-service um self-service sometime we cannot um trust on this auto correct you have to read carefully okay 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 um automatic preference storage um we need that one enable secure digital downloads reduce email traffic and printing cost okay that's it um so this help everyone stay aligned and why we are building this project and what benefits we are aiming for okay so these are a help for the everyone okay uh so now let's convert this idea into structured draft requirements okay um you see how many times we have to write the same thing right so this is the typical business analyst main job is so requirements okay if you get it done right during the session this would be really good when you're very clear to work on okay so I'm gonna write numbers so that I can track okay how many thing I should work so be quiet and let's this uh document function requirement this is very important for our team the system should allow its kind of acceptance criteria customers to set their statement delivery delivery pre preference uh manual online both okay and number two the system system should store customer preferences uh secure like okay so this stored in database uh the system should notify customers when tax statements you don't need to bring um APIs and microservices anything yet so so we can just generally recommend to backend or like a system or program whatever uh it's good to use the word system so it's referred to all the system we are going to work on portal portal okay number five the system should ensure access is restricted to authenticated third customers only back office users should be able to track statement generation and delivery status compliance hub should be maintained for all document access events okay I need uh big format here because I wasted too fast okay nice and easy okay so it's taking time okay this is good this is there okay so hourly requirement um the system should allow customer to set their statement delivery uh preference manual online this mistake this um this should be the the system should store a customer preference secretly the system should notify customer when tax statement already the customer should be able to download the uh tax statement through the online portal the system should ensure access is restricted to authenticated customers only back office users should uh this is a type error should be that's what you should be able to try the track statement generation and uh delivery status delivery status okay uh compliance this is wrong compliance law should be maintained maintained for all document access uh events okay so this is how a JAD session help us move fast by collecting input uh confirming agreement and drafting requirement live with everyone in the same session okay so let's wrap up our day two session so today you'll learn how to run a JAD session listen to multiple stakeholder and organize notes in conference um conference in real time we also show how to translate discussion into early draft requirements let me update this one so tomorrow day three we'll move into process mapping we'll take this requirement and visualize how data actions um flow from customer to system so if you are following along save your conference page and review notes um you type today each day bill uh your muscles memory as real world business analyst okay see you everyone thank you and have a good day